All right, six o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Charter Township of Bedford Planning Commission to order, and we'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right, roll call when you're ready.
Jean McKay, here. Claudia Brown, here. Barbara Jones, here. Kevin Valison, here. Tony Artis, here. Mike Stamm, here. Shirley Togo, here. We have seven present quorum established.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is gonna be approval of the July twenty-second. Twenty twenty-five agenda. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, roll call on that, please.
Mike Stamm.
Yes.
Tony Artis.
Yeah.
Kevin Valison.
Yes.
Shirley Togo, yes. Barbara Jones.
Yes.
Bonnie Brown.
Yeah.
Jean McKay.
Yes.
Seven agenda is approved.
Thank you. Uh, next item is gonna be approval of the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Claudia and Kevin, any discussion on those? Minutes? Okay, seeing none, roll call on that, please.
Kevin Villasen.
Yes.
Tony Artis.
Yeah.
Shirley Togo, yes. Barbara Jones.
Yes.
Mike Stamm.
Yes.
Claudia Brown.
Yeah.
Jean McKay.
Yes.
We have seven approved. Bill minutes are approved.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, building and zoning report from Cody. Do you have anything that was pressing that?
Oh, uh, we did get in line for the, uh, Silver Ridge Community Fund Grant. We got that submitted. Uh, we got confirmation that we're in line, that they tissue those in batches. So whenever the next batch gets issued, we should know. We qualify, we qualify for ninety thousand total. Run. On issuance, then dealer have, once they finish construction.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, the township appreciates your work getting that, uh, submitted. I know that was a tricky year application to understand, so. We appreciate you taking care of that for us, or for the township. Uh, next item on the agenda is our liaison report from trustee McKay.
Yes, I informed the board of your work as you started on the existing new, but slightly, uh, needed a few changes on the zoning ordinance, um, from simple typos to some language. And, uh, I know Cody's also spearheading that effort to, uh, get everything cleaned up. And the board is standing by, ready to help you in any way.
Excellent, thank you. All right, uh, next item on the business is gonna be discussion of old business. And that is, uh, the continued public hearing from, uh, March, I believe it works twenty-second. Uh, that we continue from. Uh, do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
No motion. How second?
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we will go ahead and open up for public comment. This is on the continuative public hearing, uh, the request of Mancing LLC on Bedford Road. For their storage facility, and we will open that at six oh four.
Hi, Gail Meister. Just wanted to say that, um, looking at your ordinance first. I am not sure how far this is from the school, but I understand, hopefully that's been taken into consideration. Um, I don't know if the school filed the complaints. I did try to contact them, but didn't hear back. So I'm hoping that will be covered for me to understand what's happened there. Personally, my husband and I do not wanna see this go through, so we don't against it, but, uh, that's our opinion. And again, I'd like to know about the school and the distance.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there any other public comment, uh, on the continued public hearing at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll close that at six oh six. Okay, uh, discussion. Uh, does the applicant want to step up to the podium? Uh, or would you like us just go ahead and, we're, we're gonna have lots of questions and some stuff that we'll need to go over. Um, up to you if you wanna sit and take notes or step up to the podium. Okay, all right. Uh, if we do have some questions that we get in the back and forth, if you, if you wanted to just step up there so that we could hear you, that would be great. All right, thank you. Okay, um, as far as the initial set of documents. Uh, everybody has received, received those. Um, I know that we did that, we, we did not receive those by the deadline that, that, that we had. That's why they were late getting to you guys. Um, I hope everybody's had a chance to kinda just take a look at, um, at those and just kinda, kind of see what's going on there. Um, I have about a dozen concerns here, um, and I'm, I'm sure that there are some other ones. We're just gonna briefly go through those. Um, the first s- set of concerns that, uh, we have as a commission is, you know, we, we sat and, you know, we sat down and we had a meeting and, you know, kind of explained to you what we were looking for. Uh, so we have three different site plans with three different dates. And they're from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, and then twenty twenty-five. Uh, the commission cannot approve or deny or review a site plan that does not have one current, current date. Um, so that is one of the, one of the first, first concerns we have there. Um, secondly, uh, if we take each of the site plans individually, the Wells Drive, look, appears to be at first glance fully engineered with the schematics that, that we requested. And does show the carbon filtration, air filtration system that's required in the ordinance. In it, if you go to the next set of site plans that we were, that was submitted referring to the, uh, existing operation, storage building there. Uh, that is the site plan that it reads, I, I don't, I can't remember the date right off the top of my head, but I believe it was June of twenty twenty-one. Um, it's on there. Um, that is a site plan that was not approved by the planning commission. Um, that was submitted for, for, for us to look at now. Um, and what I mean by that is, if you take a look at that, um, if, if you guys are following along in your, in your packet, they have the schematics for that storage building in there. Um, there is no carbon filtration, you know, air scrubbers, uh, shown on there. It just shows, I believe ventilation with the outside air, which is not compliant with the zoning ordinance, but more importantly, that site plan that, I don't, I don't know where that came from, but that was not one that was approved by the commission in twenty twenty-three with your greenhouse expansion. And the site plan that we have in front of us shows indoor growing activities in there. Um, so I'm sure that that is just an oversight, um, on, you know, the engineer's part, or, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly how the site plans got to you and then got to us. Um, I, I can tell you that, um, in twenty twenty-three, we did see that site plan and we requested, you know, you, you can't, you can't grow in there because you weren't approved to grow in there. It's just a storage facility. Um, so that, somewhere you guys should have a site plan that is appropriate, but it needs to be updated with the current date. As far as that goes. And then if you take a look at the greenhouse, um, that, that was submitted, that site plan also, the one that you submitted for, you know, for this, for this application, uh, was not the site plan that was approved by the planning commission in October of twenty twenty-three. It also does not show the two air filtration systems that were approved by the commission, and it does not have a full set of mechanicals, which is what you guys need to show so you can finish your greenhouse. And we've kinda touched, touched base on that. So that being said, those are, those are three pretty major things. Um, and again, it is important that anytime, even when you're doing a site amendment, which is essentially what this is, because you guys are combining the parcels, you have to give us a full set of drawings of all existing buildings that are currently in operation, anything that you planned, planned to do that you've been approved for, and they have to meet the zoning ordinance and/or conditions that were attached at the time of that approval, and they have to have a current date on there. I understand that you're just only amending, you know, your site plan to combine the two parcels and use that as storage. But it has to be, you know, you're submitting the entire package. Um, so the planning commission cannot take a look at, you know, uh, even doing a site review with the, the inaccurate plans at, at this particular, particular moment. As, as far as that goes, um, those are my three initial concerns. Uh, with those, does anybody else have any other concerns that have jumped out to them?
No, I think I got a little confused when I was looking at these and then realized the difference in, in the building was the difference of the date of the drawings.
Okay, yeah.
That was confusing to me, but I figured, yeah.
And I, and I do, I guess I owe, uh, trustee McKay and Tony, uh, an apology, uh, in the sense that it did not cross my mind to get you guys the approved documents from twenty twenty-three, so you had something to compare it to. Uh, so I apologize for, for that, um, as far as that goes. We absolutely will get you those, um, because we have a, a, a notarized copy. Um, and we have the personal ones as well. Um, so I apologize if that, I'm sure that was very confusing when you were looking at this going, well, what is that? So, um, Barbara, do you have any other, you know, concerns?
No, I don't.
Uh, just, just with the, the, the site plans in general, and then we'll, we'll talk about the operations plan and a few, a few things of that nature. Shirley, did you have any? Kevin, did you have any question?
What is the distance? Did they ever figure that out? Is it, is it property line? Is it building line?
Okay. So as far as the question is to how we're going to handle the, uh, language in the zoning ordinance. We have all agreed and we're, we're in the process of doing the text amendment. You can't measure property line to property line because they share the property line. Uh, Cody and I also noticed, or Cody noticed, uh, this afternoon that, uh, referring to the schools, um, that, that, that were concerned by the resident, that is a thousand-foot buffer there. And I believe, uh, I can look it up and read it word for word, but it, it just says it's ma- it's measured by, by radius. It does not give us a parameter, like a radius of what? From the corner of your building, from your property line, um, you know, so we are gonna have to clean that up as well. We kind of, uh, have reached out to the attorneys, uh, and they've, you know, said that, you know, generally speaking, in a situation like this, you know, the zoning administrator will make an interpretation of what the zoning, zoning ordinance actually was, was meaning to say. Um, you know, and they can, he can make that interpretation, or if he's uncomfortable, he would bring it back to us, which he has done and said, well, we have to, we have to address this, this issue. Um, I believe, you know, in our preliminary discussions, you know, the intended interpretation was from the corner of the structure.
Closest corner to closest corner.
Closest corner of the structure to closest corner of, of the, the, the structure in question. So, to give an, to give an example real quickly, it would be the, like, if you're talking about Wells Drive, it's closest corner of that building to the closest corner of the school. Uh, we have not done the site review on that yet, uh, mainly because the documents were not fully submitted, so when we get there, that will be how we, how we handle that. And, you know, that will come from the zoning administrator with, you know, the map and the, and the radius, and then, you know, uh, corner to corner on the, on the other structure. I mean, uh, what we will, what we will end up probably doing via text amendment will be making those both the same. Uh, the other issue is, so for the school, we're using the word radius, and then, you know, for the, you know, uh, the two hundred fifty-foot back buffer for the dwellings, it was corner of structure to structure. So we will make that uniform. Um, but in the interim, if we have, uh, to finish processing any application before then, that is how we will handle that. So, uh, that kind of addresses the residence, uh, concern as to how we're going to do that. Um, and then Kevin, I believe that answers your question there, as far, as far as that goes. Uh, it will not be changing the, the, the setback that we have in there. It's not what we are, we are, we're talking about changing. So it's still gonna be the thousand feet, two hundred and fifty feet, but it will be, um, clarity on how we, how we measure that for you guys. Or for any applicant, not, not just this one. Okay. Uh, Jean, did you have any, um, concerns?
Well, not having some of the historical info.
Sure, right.
Looking over the, the building specs, you know, and I, I, I've noticed some of the things you already pointed out about the exhaust, air handling system, not having scrubbers or some type of filtration. That's one of the things I noticed.
Which is required by, by ordinance. So that is something that will have to be addressed in, uh, any, any site plans that, that we review. And like I said, that one, uh, has the twenty twenty-one date on there, so I, I knew right away that that wasn't an accurate one, so. Um, uh, Tony, did you have any specific question?
None that haven't been already addressed.
Okay, all right, perfect. Um, there was, we did request an operations plan to, to be submitted, uh, that got to us super late on Monday. Um, is, is when, uh, well, I mean, that was sent to you after you went home for the weekend, so. Uh, you got it to us first thing on Monday, so the commission has not had a chance to even take a, take a look at the operations plan, um. It's all enclosed in your packet. I don't know if you guys got a, if anyone had a chance really to look at the, the attachment that I sent yesterday. Um, I briefly looked at it. Odor, odor mitigation is a very large concern. And comparing the odor mitigation from your approved operation plan last time and this time, there's a stark difference. That, that needs to be addressed, I guess. You know, uh, you had proposed plannings in the last one that we, you know, approved. We were really looking, looking for some specifics on how you would handle odor mitigation moving forward. Um, so that's just kinda something to, to, to think about, um, as far as that goes. That's the, the first thing that I noticed, uh, in there, but again, we have not really had the time to compare and contrast between what was approved last time and this time. I will say, uh, Cody did go do a site visit, uh, to check for the compliance for the conditions that we attached in twenty twenty-three. Uh, and he found that all conditions are being met, so they do have the plantings that were requested at that time. Um, and they did, in, in your site plans, one of the conditions last time was that they submit the, you know, a site plan showing the, uh, landscaping, and they did that, they did do that, um, here on this one. So, so those conditions have largely, you know, been met, uh, with the exception of, I guess, the greenhouse and not showing us, uh, mechanicals and, uh, the air scrubbers. Are there any other questions at this time?
How many cameras do you guys have?
How do we, the rubber fifty, that's about?
Okay.
Can I have my stack numbers?
The indoor and outdoor? How many you have outdoor?
Probably eighty percent of them are outdoor.
What's that?
About eighty percent of the cameras are outdoor.
Okay.
We are within compliance with the, with the, with the.
Okay, great.
Can we recently have inspection with the DRA and the, and you're in compliance with those.
Wonderful.
Well, I see, uh, a gentleman there holding hard copies of site plans.
Hey, I greatly apologize for that oversight. I had asked, um, oh, sorry. I had asked our architects to simply combine the previous site plans, and I did not check this work, and that is my fault. And so I did not wanna waste your time today, and I greatly apologize for that, but, um, if there's any changes needed for Wells specifically, I would love to know that, and because we can simply update the other site plan.
Sure. Uh, as far as Wells goes, the only thing that I noticed on there is, and maybe I did not get far enough in there. Did they notate where the parking was gonna be? Do you have five spaces there? It is in there? Okay, all right. I just had, had time to, had time to get there. Uh, no, I, I feel that, uh, I mean, we need to review the documents, and you need to get the other two updated appropriately to get to us. And we can certainly help you get, get, getting a list in, in, in what was and what wasn't. Um, Cody can, I'm sure, get you a copy of your twenty twenty-three that was approved, so that you can just, you know, I mean, that'll actually have a ID number on it, won't it?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
And I believe it was Cody at that one as well.
Yeah, Cody can re-.
Is he? Okay, all right.
So that was simply combining the wrong video.
Um, and then there was, I guess, the, the issue of the combining of the parcels. Uh, you guys had a question about that. We had a question about that. Um, we did get a, a letter, I guess a memo from the assessor, um, that she has received the request, uh, to combine the parcels. But at this time, they can't be combined due to the parcels having different, uh, is it zoning classifications or uses?
Not zoning and tax.
Tax, tax class.
One's commercial, one's residential.
Okay.
So that goes in front of the, I can't remember if it was December or March order review.
I would assume December.
Yeah, and that, the order review is who can change that, and then once that's changed, that can be finalized, but, I mean, she had all paperwork and uh, surveys and everything needed for that, but then, who knew that had to go?
Yeah, it's been pretty difficult getting in touch with her, but I know, I'm thinking so. I don't have that, I sure.
Uh, Seth, I do have a question on that, so do they, they can't have the parcels combined until at least December? So how would the commission go about, would they, would we process this request under separate or? It's all gonna be one site in the end.
Right.
And.
You predict condition that's.
Okay, so I guess, uh, I, I, I was not thinking clearly, so my question to you is, uh, if and when we get there, you know, uh, that could be a condition that is, that is attached via approval, is that they get approved combining of those parcels? Okay, all right. So I guess that was more an update for you, because you had said that you had a question of where, where we were at on that, so. Um, and Cody, I'm sure would be happy to get you a copy of the, of the memo from, from the assessor as well.
Okay.
Uh, because there'll be something that they have to do. They'll have to appear before the.
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure how that.
That portion works.
Um, I know she can both present stuff to it, or people can come in, but normally the people I see come in front of the board.
We'll just wanna make sure that you have that information communicated to you, so that if you do need to appear, you can, you can, you can, you can be there. So you don't have to wait until March or something like that, okay? Um, is there any other questions regarding this right now? Okay, uh, that being said, uh, at this time, I would move to table this, uh, upon determining that the site plan is not ready for approval or rejection. We have the ability to, to, to table, and what we are gonna do is we're gonna re, repost for the public hearing. At, at, at a later time, once, once we have all the documents, and we won't repost until we have all the documents. So at this time, I'm gonna move to table this, uh, to a later date. Is there any discussion on why we're tabling or what that, what that means, I guess, in general? Not something we do a lot of around here. Okay, all right, seeing none, can we just have roll call on that, please?
Jean McKay.
Yes.
Bonnie Brown.
Yeah.
Barbara Jones.
Yep.
Shirley Togo, yeah. Kevin Villasen.
Yes.
Tony Artis.
Yeah.
Mike Stamm.
Yes.
We have seven furnished, Wilson carries.
Thank you. And just real quickly for the applicant there, so that was not a rejection, that was not a denial. We were unable to process your, your, your site plan. We've already continued the public hearing once, so in the interest of fairness for the residents, we'll repost for that when you have the documents to us, you know, fully and in enough time for us to review. Um, I will say that our next meeting is September twenty-second? Okay, so.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-third, okay. Uh, so just kinda keep that, keep that in mind. Uh, if you needed to have a special meeting, we certainly could consider that, but given the amount of time that we've already given you, I would, strongly encourage you to get all your stuff done so that we can just take a look at it and just schedule that right in your meeting. Okay, all right, okay, well, uh, I encourage you to do so. That way we can take a look at it, and if there's anything else that needs to be added to it, we can do that, and then, uh, we can certainly internally discuss how we'd like, how we would like to handle that, um, as far as that goes. So I just wanted to explain what tabling, again, we don't do that often, so, all right. Uh, and if you have any questions, please reach out to, to Cody, and then if there's any further questions after that, he can reach out to me and we'll, we'll make sure that you get what, what you need, but what, what we just discussed was the primary issues there. We can't evaluate a site plan that is accurate, okay? All right, wonderful, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is update our discussion on our text amendments. So, uh, and Cody's actually, four or five more things. That we've about doubled, about doubled the list, um, and we still have, um, you know, some other stuff that we need to get examples for and whatnot, uh, from what we discussed, uh, at, you know, last month's meeting. Um, we are still waiting for, I guess, a, you know, a price quote from our, our partners at McKenna to see, you know, what all this entails. Um, in talking with, um, several, several different people, I think the best thing for us to do is find out exactly what we're looking at, so that we can have a better situation and understanding of what, what it is we're asking either the firm to do or not. So we had primarily only talked about, you know, using a planner last time, but we do have very excellent municipal attorneys that also do text amendments all the time. Uh, you know, it's. Uh, you know, it's really a question of are we reinventing the wheel or not? Uh, and, and we're not. Um, so I think what I'd like to do at this time is discuss. Maybe assigning each of us a couple of sections to go through. And just look for, you know, confusing wording, you know, misspellings and, and things of that nature. Um, or anything that you, you question. Uh, and then we can bring that back up, you know, in a list format. And to kind of discuss what we're doing and compile a more, I guess, specific list of what we, what we need to do. Um, this is an example here, you know, I mean, most of the things that Cody has added to the list. Uh, appear to be very technical, not necessarily pop policy, if, if that makes sense. Uh, you know, just things that need clarification, more, more of the, you know. Uh, wording maybe that just wasn't quite right or didn't get quite carried over. My general thinking is that if we have ninety percent of that looking like that, that is certainly something that we might be able to, to, to handle. Handle here in-house. Um, but I think it would be important for us to take a look at all the sections. And just do a deep dive, you know, in that, you know, particular section that we're working in. See what you think and then bring that back to us and then, and then put together a very thorough list. Is my thinking. Are there any comments or discussion on that in, in any way? Are we, are we in favor of that or, uh? Do we want to go a different route?
Do you have a breakdown?
I, I can say that one, one of, one of the things that, that was mentioned to me, um, in trying to. You know, get the quote was, you know, like, what are you looking for? And I mean, yes, I had our list that we had, but I, I feel like the list is, is clearly growing and so on and so forth. So. You know, I think that we have a good enough group here that if it's not anything major, we, you know, and it will also be faster that way as well.
Yeah, more efficient.
And, and more efficient, you know, if, if, if that is the goal of the commission, I think that it is. I mean, we would like to. Uh, spend a year on this. Like we have in the past, so. Any thoughts there?
Great idea. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor.
All right. Would you guys like to go through and assign like the, the, the sections right now or? You want me just to reach out to you guys and, and, and assign them or?
Let's do it now while we're here in case something comes up that.
Okay.
We really don't want to.
Okay, all right.
Section.
Um, does everybody have their zoning, zoning, everyone has their zoning book open, which is excellent. Uh, go ahead and turn right to the table of contents. That's going to have all the different articles listed right there for us. Um, and I guess real quickly, sure, surely, uh, as the secretary. We don't normally assign you a task. Would, would you, would you like, would, okay, okay. Before we get going. And then Gene, as the liaison, I mean, we don't normally assign you a task either. But you're in, okay, all right. Excellent. Wonderful. Well, listen to your. Why do I assign this so I don't have to do anything? You know, okay. Um, so real quick, you know, we have what, step sixteen or seventeen article?
Sixteen, but number sixteen for definitions.
Okay. All right, and those are, so article, yeah. Article sixteen and then article four are going to be the very, very long ones. Article, article four is going to be all the uses and then the standards for those uses. And that is kind of where Cody and I are seeing some of the word discrepancy. So in my head here, uh, there are seven of us. There's sixteen, sixteen of those. Fifteen, if you take out, you know, take out number four. So. In my head, we would just each take one article and then we'll divvy up article four, which is many. You know, you know, five or, five or six or however we want to do that. Does anybody have any concern with that?
Did you say article four has the most discrepancy so far?
Uh, well, it has the most items. And yes, I would, I would say that it also has the, the, the most.
Why don't we all do that one, but take certain sets, certain section others to divide up?
Okay, yes.
And get that one out of the way since it's going to be the hard.
Be the hard one.
You guys would already have as well.
Okay. All right, well. Sounds good. Let me just get to a new piece of paper here and we'll do this as quickly and painlessly as possible.
Well, we'll have, we'll, we have Cody's, um, findings so that we are not, okay, so, okay.
Yes, so we can forward, I can forward everyone the list that we had from the last meeting, the additionals that, uh, Cody has, has, has found. So you'll have that kind of as a baseline and that also may help you kind of give you a guide as to like what kind of you're looking for. Um, as far as that goes. And again, if it is confusing or you need clarification, bring that back and we'll, and we'll get it. And if it's something you need to address, fine. If not, after you get your clarification, that's fine too.
Okay.
Um, but it would be helpful that when we, when we sat down to do it, if we all had, you know, whatever in a list form. So that we can, you know, make that part of the public record and then try and get as many answers lined up for you, you know, ahead of time. You know, that, that would be good. Um, all right. So Barb, you wanted to do article four first?
I just think that that one would take the most time and, and it's too much for one person, so.
I agree. Um, so there are.
Divide that one up and there's fifty-five.
Yep.
Sections divided by seven people is seven point eight. So.
All right.
Two and a half two.
Yeah. All right, okay, uh, here, I'll just go ahead and you said it was seven?
Mm-hmm, seven, yeah, seven point eight five seven.
All right, Tony, if you would take four oh one. Through four oh seven. Uh, Gene, if you would take four oh eight. Through four fifteen. Kevin, if you'll take four sixteen. Through four twenty-four. I will take. Four twenty-five. Through four thirty-two. Did you want seven of these, Shirley?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, Shirley, if you'll take four thirty-three. Through four forty. Barb, if you will take four forty-one. Through forty-eight. And then Claudia, you get forty-nine. Through fifty-five. All right, any questions on that? Okay, perfect. Um. Does anybody, so I would like to take article thirteen. That's going to be our processes and procedures. And coming off of, um. An applicant, you know, not being able to get us stuff and, and, and everything else, I think I would like to take a look at that one. So that I can maybe recommend some other changes to help, uh, streamline our application process and whatnot in our review process. Does anybody have a problem with, with that?
No.
As far as that goes?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I also think, what are our thoughts on article sixteen? That's all the definitions. Um, I don't necessarily feel like that is something that we're concerned about doing text amendments on. So do we all just want to take a peek at that? Um, you know, that way if you have any questions about a definition in your section, you know, you can just, you know, handle that.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, so that leaves us with fourteen left. That we all pretty much can, can take two. Um. I, I like to think that I kind of know what our strengths are, so I'm just going to go ahead and assign these if that's all right, guys.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, wonderful. So, don't, don't be mad. I'm not picking on anybody in particular. Uh, so Kevin, would you take article fifteen, the rules of construction?
Sure.
And then also. Art, article fourteen, the administrative organization. All right, I am going to take thirteen. And I'd also like to take number eleven, the performance standards. I think that kind of ties into our procedures and processes. Uh, Barb, would you take article twelve, planned unit development? You might be the only one that has any experience even processing one of those, to be honest with you. Uh, if you would take that. And then. If you would also take, uh, article ten, the signs?
Because I made such a cuss over that solar thing with his mind.
I, it, 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 it is not, but you know, it seems like that could be a passion. So I mean, it only seems fitting to give that to you there. Absolutely. Uh, Claudia, would you take the, uh, article nine and article eight, the landscaping and screening and then walls and fences? Tony, would you do, uh, article seven, our parking? I feel like you brought up some pretty good points the other day when we were talking about that stuff. And then. Go ahead and also, uh, if you would be interested in doing article two, the zoning districts. That might help to get a little bit of experience, you know, like with, you know, terminology in the zoning districts and what they mean and, and that kind of thing as well. If you're, if you're comfortable with that.
Yep.
Okay? Uh, and then Gene, would you take six, the non-conformities?
Of course.
Seems like, seems like a good one for the professor to handle this way, Frank. Uh, and then also our, uh, general provisions?
Number one.
Uh, number five, yep. Is that, is that all right, Gene?
Yeah.
Okay. And then. We've got, uh, what do we have left? One, three and four? No, four, four is everybody. So one and three. So I will take those.
Will you give me my second one?
No, I didn't?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, well, which, which would you like?
Give me, uh.
So, uh, article one?
Three.
Three? You want three? Okay. All right, I'll take one and Shirley will take three. Barb is twelve. Well, Barb is twelve, ten and twelve. Correct.
That's right.
Right, I was talking to Shirley. Oh, Shirley. Seen my ears off. Uh, what was that first section that you had?
Four, three, three to four, four.
C four.
Or first article.
Part of four. On article four.
Oh, part four, okay.
I'm doing four thirty-three to four forty.
I hadn't, I had not actually given her another.
I took article three. And then where are you at? My, oh, because you already had thirteen and eleven to do.
Shirley does. Yes. Yep. Okay. Uh, any questions on kind of, you know, I mean, this is maybe a little bit different than we normally do it, but I mean, I think it'll be good, it'll be good for us.
Fun.
Okay. Yes, absolutely. If anybody is stumped or they have a question, please, please, please reach out and we will, we will, we will get you the information that, that we need.
He has four.
And then we all have four.
Oh, well, that's all right.
Cody's going to send us.
I will.
But you just have.
Okay, or Michael send us the list.
The number.
Already stuff found. Yeah.
Highlighted everything they talked about last month, and then all the new stuff.
Okay. Great, that helps.
And when do you want to sign?
Um. Well, we're theoretically going to be off for sixty days.
Yeah, I was going to say so much for our time off.
I know, I'm.
This is a take the book home assignment.
I, I, I promise that when I propose the meetings for next year, I will, I will not. Uh, overpromise and severely underdeliver on the amount of time off, so.
Somewhere homework.
Right, so I, I apologize for that. Um, I would think that, uh, our, can, can we all bring this back in sixty days?
Sure.
Um.
The twenty-third.
Seth, as far as your firm's involvement, how would you like us to, to go about? What, what is the easiest way for you guys?
The easiest way when we do tax amendments is if I can get a copy of the zoning orders in Word. And I think, I think McKenna may have that, okay?
I have it.
Or you have it, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And then when we look at the changes, you would just track the change, then you can see where it is. And generally. It, it's not that bad. Okay, when you figure out what the true intent is, what you want, you usually get it fixed pretty fairly easily, especially when you're talking about measuring from, you know, foot square and foot square and things like that. You can get it fixed pretty quickly. And then when, when we get that together, we send it to the P C. You and I would probably work, you know, ahead of time and, and then you send it to the P C with consideration, you review it, fix what you want or revise what you, however you think. Then you send it to the public hearing. Okay, then notice sometimes it gets a little complicated and pretty long because I probably have a lot of amendments. But then, you know, it goes to public hearing and then so on and so forth.
Okay, so my, my, in my head, I was going to ask you, we'll need to list each amendment specifically. And then we'll need to discuss each one specifically at the public hearing. Is probably best practice?
Yeah, it, it.
Okay.
Something about tracking the change in the Word format is it's easy. Everyone can see exactly, you know, how, how it's going to read. And I think like, at, at least with me, you help I see. I, I learned by seeing it, you know, if you see, if you see where it is, you can see how it functions.
So, so what Seth is talking about for anybody who's not familiar with that, so almost every time when we have something that. We send out and then, you know, they, we make a change, they will send it back to me with a track change. And that's basically, it's going to be a different font and normally it's, normally it's red. So you can, you can see exactly what it is, you know, so it's a, a different color in case. You do do the color thing, but it's also a slightly different font. So you, you're going to know exactly what it was. Um, and we'll be very specific with the list that we give to whomever that is, so you'll, you'll know where to look in general. Um, so it's not like you have to go back through and re, reread the whole thing, try and find what the change was. It'll still be the original and then whatever the track change is right there. And then basically, long story short, after you, you know, go through the public hearing, we approve it, you, you accept the track changes and then that changes the document.
Okay, and when you're looking at it, I, I wouldn't try to, don't rewrite it. Like what, like there's an issue here, what's the issue, right? And then maybe, you know, highlight where you think the issue is. And then we've worked with that for you. That's, that's simply how it goes. Or I think that's how, this is efficient when it does that. When we, when we see what your intent is. And then we kind of, you know, work with that so you can see it in, in tracking.
Yeah, and, and to piggyback off of what Seth is describing, you know, we're not necessarily looking to change, change the policy. I mean, if there's something that, that is drastically, you know, confusing, we certainly can ta, take a look at that. But this is really just to make sure that we have these, essentially what I'm calling typos. Or just, you know, words that were just not put together appropriately, taken out. Yeah, housekeeping so that it's very clear. So when our zoning administrator is in there. And, you know, we're, we're doing a site review, it's, you know, property corner to whatever, or this is what. Or this is what the radius is or, you know, so on, and we're looking for uniformity as well. You know, we used the marijuana as a reference tonight, you know, we're measuring a buffer two different ways in, under the current, you know, neither one was specific and one was flat out not possible, so. Uh, so that's the kind of thing that we're, that we're looking for. I mean, I certainly encourage everyone to, to, to read, read their sections and if there is something that, you know, policy wise, that is either confusing or whatever, yes, please, please reach out and we'll absolutely discuss that and, you know, a lot of times, uh, you know, our attorney is great about, you know, well, this is actually what that, that, the intent is there, you know, and it, sometimes it just doesn't read, 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 you know, doesn't register when you're reading it, but when. When he explains it, it, yeah, it makes, it makes more sense.
Comes together, something I would say is like, as you finish your section, send it over to Mike, right? And then we could, you know, get that in there, so like, you know, Gene finishes, you know, whatever, right away, then, okay, I can get that in and that, you know, that section is kind of, you know, updated for, for visual view, then if you get one, you know, so on and so forth, that way it's kind of building, instead of doing it all at once. Cause we knew all at once is going to be really long and we want to try to, try and get it right, okay? We don't want to keep going back down this.
Right, and I will also say that, you know, very early on in the process, last year, you know, uh, our, our attorneys said that, you know, this is a complete overhaul of the zoning ordinance, there'll probably be tax amendments within one year. And I said, well, what are you talking about, that's just crazy, uh, you know, this, this is very standard practice. I think you would agree, Seth, that when you do a complete overhaul, it's just impossible to get it, to get it right. You know, you, you know, perfect.
It's several hundred pages.
Yes, yes. Um, and that is not to say that, you know, we can revisit this whenever we need to, whenever our zoning administrator, you know, points out something else that, you know. Uh, and, and again, this is not a surprise, you know, we're, we're working through this, it's, you know, only been in effect for what, seven, seven months?
Yeah.
You know, so we're getting applications, he's getting questions, you're reading it, you're comparing this section to that and the standards and, you know, sometimes, you know, what's in section seven doesn't jive with, you know, whatever section four is, so. But yeah, any other questions on that? Okay, perfect. Uh, next is going to be open public comment time. It's going to be about anything you want, we'll open that at six fifty-two. All right, seeing none, we'll close that at six fifty-two. Uh, next item is going to be commissioner member time, uh, Claudia?
Um, I have nothing, so thank you.
All right, Barb?
Yes, I just wanted to say how fortunate our planning commission is, as well as as well as Claudia, because Claudia has had a terrible year. Claudia has broken things on her body and we most recently, um, was attacked by wasp, were they, or hornet? Yes, and went into shock, her heart stopped beating. Uh, she is, uh, and Bedford Township, uh, our new fire chief, Bill Whitworth is through. What, they saved this child's life.
They did, they did.
So we're glad to still have you with us here.
It was good to be here, guys, it was good to be here, thank you so much.
You're welcome and, um, you had, never had that happen before, right? You didn't know you were allergic, right?
No, oh, gee.
It's just the crappy someone, guys.
Started in February, hasn't stopped yet.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that out because you're one of our board.
I agree.
You'll agree, okay, thank you so much.
Shirley, do you have anything to add?
No, just go ahead, she's in. Really, I do think everybody who serves on this board, because this, this has been a job, and to Cody and Seth as well, to bring this all into completion format.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the format because all these steps are things to everybody who's working on this team.
Absolutely, make a good team.
Kevin?
Thank you so very much for all the board and also thank you, Mike, for assigning these provisions out articles, so we can take it more in-depth, so it's not just on one or two people.
Right, we're embracing the, the team mentality here.
I can see a lot of, I can see a lot of coffee and.
Thank you, uh, Trustee McKay?
I'm glad to be participating in this event. And I think a side benefit of this is we'll all become better acquainted with certain parts of the zoning ordinance. That we may have read, but not with the, the eye that we're going to be looking at it now.
Exactly.
And I think it's a great benefit.
Good point.
Thank you, uh, Tony, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I just look forward to going through it and getting everything in order, with the flashbacks to work, but.
Good or bad?
We'll, we'll find out.
Okay. All right, uh, yeah, I mean, thank you guys for being willing to, you know, take on, you know, a little bit more of a, you know, proactive role. Um, like I said, I don't know that we've typically done it this way, but I think it'll be a good, a good learning experience, as Trustee McKay said, so. Um, I know that every time I read this thing, I read something a little differently or I catch something that, you know, you know, whatever, so, so yeah. Okay, uh, with that, uh, I will move to adjourn the meeting at six fifty-six.